I'm going to ask people if they could talk fairly loudly tonight because my ears have a lot of fluid in them. And I'm having a hard time.
Okay.
Hi, and welcome to the Pioneer Valley Regional School District School Committee meeting. This is Thursday, January 9th. We are journeying, or journeying, yeah, we are beginning.
Okay.
That was a quick meeting, everyone, at 6:07. 6:07. All right, and we do have one member who is remote, so we do need to take a roll call. Melissa, can you start?
Melissa Osborne here.
Stephanie Arroyo here.
Raina Dastu here.
Gretchen Kelton here.
Michelle Jerusalem here.
Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, sorry, I can't be there in person. Steve Martin here.
And Melissa Gary present. Okay. And are there any citizens' comments? I don't see anyone here tonight. So moving on to the approval of minutes for December 12th, 24.
I have one thing.
Okay.
I was not both present and absent, and so.
Oh, you have many talents, Mrs. Kelton.
There are things I can do, but not that. So I was absent.
Michelle, same thing.
I was absent, I believe. What was this, December 12th?
You were also present. I don't know what happened there.
Yep, go ahead.
I have one on page one. Item 5B, the audit. I would like to add another quote from Auditor Scanlon. Quote, "Your financial reporting is very sound and excellent, Ellipses. You should be proud of that."
I have a correction on page two. Under 4A, the second line. There's a D at the end of Osborne.
Oh, yep. Changing people's names again.
That's okay. And page three, letter F. The last sentence. And I think, create a new draft reflecting the changes.
Oh, yep, yep.
Any more changes?
On that same page, page three, G. The second line regarding the steps rather than stops.
Oh, I see.
Mm-hmm.
Stops.
Okay. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I'll second that. Okay, any other further discussion? No, okay, Melissa?
I did some, I did.
Oh, yeah, I was second, sorry.
Sorry.
I'm going to try to speak up. My stage voice.
Melissa Osborne, yes.
Stephanie Arroyo, yes.
Raina Dastu, yes.
Gretchen Kelton, yes.
Michelle Jerusalem abstaining.
That's okay.
And Melissa Gary, yes. Okay. On to the student rep report. Is there a student rep report tonight?
No, there is not one currently for tonight.
Okay, thank you. And there is nothing from the chair. I have nothing to report tonight. Superintendent?
I'm going to pass tonight.
Okay.
Good.
All right.
Basketball game.
We have a basketball game to get to today.
This is going well.
Jordan. Okay, Jordan. Jordan, on to the director.
Slow things down. Is this like a game show? Do I have an option to pass?
Yes, you do.
I'm not going to. I'm not going to take it, even if I do. So the, I will try to keep brief, there isn't too much. In terms of expenditures, there are a couple lines that are overspent at the moment. Some of those are as a result of encumbrances that need more refinement. Overall, in the expenditures, I have a typo. I said, I wrote that it was approximately $34,000 less than budgeted, actually more than budgeted. I think that number is going to actually come down as I look at projected expenditures more. I mean, I look at it every month and refine it, but as I'm now looking at it in January, you know, I wrote this as of December 31st, but there's some areas that I think we're actually going to spend a little bit less than projected. So I don't think it is likely to be $35,000 or $34,000 more than budgeted. But we'll see. You never know what might come up, what excitement is in store for us. But, but, so I think it'll be a little more moderate than I projected here, but is I right? You know, there's, if ultimately expenditures are more than revenues, you know, I can always put things on either revolving fund or grants. But I have my fingers crossed that things are going to come in within budget and there'll be ways to make sure things are in balance without having to do that. But we shall see. So in terms of reports, revenues, similar situation, revenues are a little bit less than budgeted. So again, some of that is wait and see. I think that revenues are a little more fleshed out. I think that they are likely to be a little bit less than budgeted. And although the report shows 41.63% of budgeted revenue, that's really underreporting is the actual state aid hadn't been posted to the general ledger as of December 31st, but it's been received and now it will show in the next report. So in terms of revenue, nothing too exciting. I think we're, you know, going to be like 99% approximately of what was budgeted, so nothing too alarming there. As we've tried to make budgets tighter, you know, we're going to be pretty close. So we'll create some excitement as we come towards the end to see if we can make sure everything's balanced. But I anticipate, if it is out of balance, it'll be a small amount where we can just use a revolving fund or a grant. The lunch report. So December has fewer operating days. I think everybody knows, we just enjoyed a nice school holiday, but for food service operations, that means less opportunities to bring in revenue, less operating days. So there was an operating profit still, which is pretty good, given the having fewer operating days, but only $888.65. Overall, there's a total operating loss of $10,186.47 for the year. But January, unlike December, has a lot of operating days. I'd for the most operating days we're going to have all year. So I anticipate that there will be operating profit for the month of January and will, between January and March, January, March, and May, you know, have very few holidays. So I anticipate come spring that we will likely be about break even and possibly a small profit. So it always looks kind of scary this time of year with food service, having some of the school holidays in November and December. But I think everything will work out. That's my projection and anticipation. Any questions?
I just have a question on the report there. The breakfast line for N E S is on a different line than for the other two sites. Is there a reason for that, or the number of? The number of breakfasts served, I think.
Yeah, why it's on that line?
Yeah.
That's a reasonable question, and I don't want to speculate. I'm going to speak with Cheryl and I will.
Okay.
Respond to you.
All right.
Speak a lie there.
I was like, why is that on a different line than the other two? All right, just curious.
Yeah, my assumption is it's potentially a typo. But I don't want to speculate without knowing for sure.
All right.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay. Moving on. So the collaborative, the Collaborative for Educational Services reached out to us and reminded us that Karen O'Neill has vacated her spot on the Board of Directors. And because we are a member of the collaborative, they are looking for someone to fill the seat on the Board of Directors. They meet mostly hybrid, though folks can show up if they want for the meetings. They meet between September and June with a summer hiatus. And so I didn't know if anyone was interested in this position. I will say that I am happy to fill this position. So if no one else has a burning desire to sit on the Board of the Collaborative, I don't, I, you know, I'm finding myself as chair. I definitely have, you know, many things I need to do, but filling this role is something that I could, I could do on behalf of the committee. So if there is no one else who wants to sit on this committee, I would accept a motion to appoint me as the P B R S D representative to C E S.
So moved.
Okay.
Great. And thank you.
Yes, thank you. No problem. Yeah, that's, it's fine. And we just need to take a vote.
Melissa Osborne, yes.
Stephanie Arroyo, yes.
Raina Dastu, yes.
Gretchen Kelton, yes.
Michelle Jerusalem, yes.
Go ahead, Steve.
Steven Martin, yes, and thank you.
Melissa Gary, yes. Okay. Passed. Okay, so the next item that we have to go over is appointment of subcommittee chairs. So traditionally, how we've operated in the past is the subcommittees get together, they have the meeting, then they decide who's going to be the chair. And then you come to school committee and say, okay, policy got together and we would like to nominate so-and-so for a chair. What we're finding kind of in practice is it's hard to post a subcommittee meeting without having a chair to help come up with what the agenda is. And so if people are amenable, I have an idea of who could actually be chairs for those committees. And we can just appoint them tonight and then they can work with me if you have any questions about getting the agenda posted and working with Taffy and so forth. Okay. So for budget, Michelle, would you be interested in continuing to be the budget chair?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Policy, Raina, would you be interested in chair?
Sure.
Okay. So teaching and learning, we have Stephen and Melissa on it. And Melissa, I was wondering if you would be chair. Thank you. Okay. District agreement, Stephanie, I was wondering if you would be chair of that. And then for collective bargaining and personnel, Gretchen, would you be chair?
Yes.
Okay. So all of us have a chair of a subcommittee. We will work together and put together the agendas. Use me as a resource, please. And then we can start scheduling those meetings.
Great.
Okay, so can we take a vote, because it has to be approved by the school committee according to policy? So can we take a vote to approve the subcommittee chairs as stated?
Melissa Osborne, yes.
Okay. Well, that was a motion, so.
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
So Michelle moved it, second? Second, Michelle, yeah? Or Michelle, sorry, Melissa. And now we can vote.
Melissa Osborne, yes.
Stephanie Arroyo, yes.
Raina Dastu, yes.
Gretchen Kelton, yes.
Michelle Jerusalem, yes. Go ahead.
Steven Martin, yeah.
And Melissa Gary, yes.
Great.
Great, wonderful.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, next is the M S B A board approval of statement of interest.
I made a memo that, I didn't make it in time for the.
Oh, thank you.
The agenda presses. But I wanted to provide the information because I thought it would be helpful to people to have something to look on. And I'll give you a copy afterwards. Patricia often laughs at me because I'm also fiscally conservative in how many pieces of paper I will print. And I printed just enough for everyone, but, and unfortunately, I'm going to get one, I promise, so. But into the meppo, so really good news, right? At the M S B A's board meeting, the district was selected to, was invited into the eligibility period. And our eligibility period doesn't begin immediately, which is nice because, you know, it provides the opportunity to complete the work of the budget prior to having the work of the eligibility period to complete as well. So it actually starts June 2nd and concludes February 27th of 2026. And, you know, this is, this is a really good thing, right? Obviously, this isn't a if you apply, you get selected situation. It's closer to 50% success rate. And some of the districts that were in contention to be selected had applied previously. So I don't think it's the case that districts that get in on the first time and probably especially districts that, you know, don't have anyone on the administrative team who's applied in the past. So it's good. We learned what we needed to and put forward a good application in a competitive process and we're selected. So it's, you know, a really positive thing for the district and an affirmation, not just of the administrative work we did, but also, you know, the really careful planning process and having a facility master plan and, you know, smart use of our S or money. Because I'm sure that made it a lot easier for the M S B A to have a really organized presentation in terms of what facilities deficiencies we have, right? Because a lot of the statement of interest process is really identifying those deficiencies and why you should be invited in. So having a really organized plan made it really easy. I mean, on the day of the actual senior study visit, you know, they were able to not even come to this building because we were able to, you know, give them a full binder. They showed everything with pictures and cost estimates, et cetera. So I think that that built confidence in them as well. So that's really good. It's nice when things go well. The actual eligibility period, really, it's just a quite a few number of things that you need to do, right? And I provided a table of what those things are and when the due dates are. You know, I think some of the heaviest lifts there in terms of time is probably the maintenance and capital planning information, you know, providing, some of the educational profile might be as well, but, you know, providing a lot of information about historical maintenance. That's just a lot of record-keeping that needs to be provided and show a history of maintenance, so. But anyway, the whole process concludes with a, you know, local vote to authorize the, to actually authorize spending for the feasibility study. And we're in a good position there as well because we are able to use our school choice reserve to pay for the feasibility study. We think that we have sufficient reserves to be able to do that. Obviously, you won't just spend it and never see it again. You do get reimbursed at about 60%, but that's nice because obviously we're able to do the feasibility study without having to have any anticipated assessment increases to the town. Yes, no bad news, which is nice. All good news. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question. On the amount of money that's in the school choice account, how many years of school choice is that? I was trying to do the math. That was quite a few years of school choice money in there. Because if we have, let me go to the enrollment, if you do the math, 22.
About two and a half years. I'll save, I don't want, you have to go into the nitty-gritty, but it's about two and a half years.
Two and a half, 1.29?
Yeah. And in some years, maybe just two.
How many school, I'm looking for that, sorry.
And I know, and I think the, if, it would be easy if it was just a straight 5,000 times, say, 45 students, but there's, there's quite a few students who have substantial special education increments. So there's, there might be a student, just to, for example, you can have a school choice student where you're receiving $100,000. It all depends on the actual services provided to the student. So in terms of a student that comes to you via school choice that doesn't have any additional needs, that's $5,000. But when students come to you via school choice that have substantial additional need, for example, specialized transportation or like adult support, you get an extra increment for that, and it's really a dollar for dollars. That aspect of school choice is more, I guess, maybe fair or just accurate in terms of actual cost of education. You know, for the general education, $5,000, that's not an accurate amount, but there's, with the increment, it's really what it costs. I would say most people think it's pretty much what it costs, so.
You can't do simple math of the 40 school choice children that are enrolled, the four by five, that's 200,000.
Yeah, I mean, you know, to give an example, sometime in our recent past, maybe you have 50 students and receive $600,000. So the average is close to $12,000 once you account for the increment. Because there'll be individual students that are 85,000, and it's the same way with going out. You know, we have individual students going out that cost $100,000. So that's.
I was just trying to.
Yeah, it's a little tricky.
How you recoup the money spent, either that 40% that you're not going to recoup.
Yep.
How long it would take to have some reserves?
Right, well, I mean, immediately you'll get 60%, so say it was $1 million, your reserve wouldn't go from a million to zero, it'd go from a million to 600,000. So essentially, for round numbers, the ultimate outlay, you could call it one year, conservatively. Because we haven't had a recent year that's as low as $400,000, but we could because we've reduced the number of students that come to us via school choice. But I anticipate that the number will still be substantially higher than $400,000 this year and next. Can't see too far into the future, but it's still going to be closer to half a million dollars. So a little less than a year, I would say, is what we're ultimately going to deplete the reserve by. And of course, so you need to be cognizant of that when budgeting. So we're obviously going to rely less on school choice than you might otherwise in the FY '26 budget. So that's where we're set up, but, you know, big reveal come Tuesday.
Friday.
Friday.
Well, I mean, initial, but I mean, the opportunity to also have a narrative around it would be very exciting.
Yeah.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question in seeking to understand. I tried to pay attention as much as I could during the process, but sometimes I need clarifying. I tried to pay attention as much as I could during the process, but sometimes I need clarifying, um, questions asked. So, when you say the district will receive 60% of the reimbursement back for the cost of the feasibility study, at what point is that guaranteed the money back?
Um, in, uh, what do you mean?
Is it, it, it's a guarantee that you'll get 60% of the feasibility study back just by spending it? You'll get it back? There isn't any other process that has to happen? Okay, great.
Well, wait. Um, I think, uh, and that is because, Renee, the MSBA process is so rigid in a good way. So prescribed, so many Ts and this, that, and the others. So, if you make the outlay, you know you're gonna get the money back.
So, would it be a case of expending the money and not being guaranteed? If you expend the money, you will get a minimum of, or the 40% back, or 60%, sorry, you'll be on the 40%.
Yep.
Got it. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. We can move on to the update for the grade six.
Sure. Uh, so, as the school committee and others saw in this brief memo, we had really hoped to begin the community-wide conversation this fall about, uh, whether we wanted to bring grade six up to Pioneer. That was our intention, and school committee kindly gave me permission to begin that process. However, uh, over multiple conversations and digging a little bit deeper into our current context with the administrative team, we have realized that it is, once again, unfortunately, not the time to have that conversation. We've got a new and excellent principal in this building who's working on some exciting initiatives, including possibly some significant changes to the school schedule. Uh, and if those were to go through, the whole building needs time to live with a changed schedule before thinking about bringing in other students. Uh, you know, we don't have our Director of Curriculum and Instruction right now. That was an unanticipated loss. Our new person will come the beginning of April. It's not a great time to be thinking about, uh, discussing a move when we haven't had that person to help us with curriculum. So, um, we are saying to the school committee, we're gonna pause on that conversation. And I'll put this in a district update, so the community knows. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good.
So, it, I just have to ask, it's just a pause? It's not that we're not gonna look at this again?
That's correct.
So, we could be looking at it each year? I just wanted to.
I don't, yeah, the great question. I don't know if I would say, uh, each year. This, the administrative team also came to an internal, um, understanding that they believe the schools and families need a full year, uh, of advanced notice before a move could take place. So, that automatically then begins to push things out. We've got a new Director of Teaching and Learning coming this spring. She needs to get on board. Maybe next winter she could start, but that would still push things out later. So, I don't anticipate bringing this up in the next 12 months, Michelle, because we have too many moving parts.
Well, I was just wondering what the impetus is behind it. Why would we still be looking at it from an educational perspective?
Yep.
From a enough, not enough room perspective in the elementary schools? I'm just trying to figure out.
Yep.
I know what happened in the past. But are we still talking about this because it's the best education for our children, for the children?
Great question. There were three main rationales, uh, previously. Uh, and that was, uh, was this best educationally for students, financially, would it make sense, um, and space-wise? There was a great need. Some of the space need has changed. The educational question will always be there. We are always thinking about what works best. That question's never going to go away. So, de facto, a conversation about should sixth grade be located in this building could very well come up because we're always thinking, what will be best? Would it be better to have a middle school, a true middle school, six, seven, eight in that, this building? Yep, we might engage with that question again.
So, is that gonna be in a plan that we can see for the future? Whether it's goals or in a future plan for our schools? I think we need to be looking at those. We've got so much going on, on, on our plate.
Right. And so, yep.
Decisions.
So, at the, uh, next school committee meeting, I committed to bringing to the school committee some names of possible vendors who could lead the strategic planning process.
That was at the last meeting, I think, that you might have been absent from.
Oh, okay.
That you were absent from.
Yeah.
So, we talked about at the last meeting about.
Why was he at the last meeting?
Or when we talked about that. Okay.
That's, yeah.
Okay. I thought maybe you weren't here for that discussion. So, then, so then the strategic plan that.
Maybe it was remote or something. Whatever.
The strategic plan that we would be, um, engaging in would definitely be, be bringing up that topic.
Okay.
All right.
And, and you'll remember the school committee put off engaging in the strategic plan? Yeah, okay.
Okay. Pa, uh, policy review.
Okay. So, this first one is a handbook, um, proposed change. Uh, thank you to Jeremiah Clark, uh, Dean of Students, and Annie Scanlon-Amy, and all the students who worked on it. I don't know if either of you worked on this, uh, and the staff who worked on this. So, this is not a policy change. This does not require two readings. The school committee could, if it so chooses, vote to approve the change in language. This is an updating of the language related to the senior students' off-campus privileges during lunch. This tightens up the language and makes very clear what the requirements are in order to be allowed off-campus for lunch and what the consequences would be for not following through on an agreement. Uh, we've got a form that has been reviewed by legal and, uh, insurance, uh, that parents and guardians can sign off, will use to sign off saying, "I agree. Here we go." Um, and the policy subcommittee reviewed this proposed language at their meeting on January 2nd and proposed bringing it to the full committee for consideration.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Yeah?
The only, um, and I don't know if, if the period makes a difference. But in the first, uh, in the current language, it says 39 minutes. And in the second one, it doesn't mention minutes.
Because that's an outdated number.
Oh, okay. I was just wondering if the minute should be in there?
Yeah, thank you. No.
Is there a, um, time that this would be reflected? Um, would this be an immediate change?
Oh, great point.
Because.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Former policy chair.
Yeah.
You might amend to your motion, uh, uh, this language is to be effective. Uh, you could do it tomorrow. You could do it next Monday.
Monday.
Uh, you're, you're, the date of your, Claire is saying, uh, no.
Maybe after review with the seniors, if it passes?
Maybe after review with the seniors, if it passes.
Senior meeting?
So, they can be aware.
Have a senior meeting, so they know what the expectations are.
Give us a, how much time, Claire? Give us a.
Uh, 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 next Tuesday. Next Tuesday, because they can meet during pathways, right? They can meet during pathways. And then it could start on Wednesday. They could get the forms and then it could start after that.
Is that, what number is that?
15 is Wednesday.
15.
Do you wanna do that? There's no, the forms could be started now. Okay.
I have a small question. It's just about the waivers and specifically about seniors who are over 18. Do the waivers still need to be signed as the student at age 18 is legally an adult?
That's a great question, Rena. I don't know the answer, and I can look for that answer.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move, um, to approve the proposed updates to the PVRS student handbook regarding senior off-campus lunch privileges to begin next Tuesday or to begin after the senior meeting.
Wednesday, the 15th.
Wednesday, January 15th.
Second.
Melissa Osborne, yes.
Stephanie Royo, yes.
Rena Dastu, yes.
Gretchen Kelton, yes.
Michelle Jerusalem, yes.
Stephen Martin, yes.
Great. Melissa Gary, yes.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, next is the student searches.
Also reviewed by the policy subcommittee at their meeting on January 2nd. The subcommittee, uh, and the admin team are recommending that, um, we rescind the previous proposal to update the language to policy J I H. However, uh, the policy subcommittee and the administrative team does recommend, uh, a change to both the elementary and student handbook. That would make clear that if a student search does take place at school, a school official must, uh, contact a parent guardian afterwards.
Any further discussion? Okay.
I'll move to approve the changes to the elementary and PVRS student handbooks as presented.
I'll second that.
Melissa Osborne, yes.
Stephanie Royo, yes.
Rena Dastu, yes.
Gretchen Kelton, yes.
Michelle Jerusalem, yes.
Stephen Martin, yes.
And Melissa Gary, yes.
Thank you. And once there's a, uh, who's the new policy chair?
Renee.
Oh, great. Rena will be presenting in the future when there's a policy recommendation. I will not be making this, so, so that you all, I wouldn't be doing this. The chair would be taking this over. Okay. This is a first reading, so you don't need to vote tonight. Uh, this is a proposal to update the district's attendance policy to allow, uh, appointments with a healthcare provider as an excused absence. Uh, the, uh, this has been discussed among the administrative team with the district nurse leader and again by the policy subcommittee. Uh, on the administrative side, there is a strong feeling that, uh, uh, in order to be excused for a healthcare appointment, uh, the student should have a written note from the healthcare provider. The offices know how to do that. So-and-so was seen. We have no interest in knowing what they were seen for. It's just so-and-so was seen, uh, in the office. So, you have the rationale outlined up top. Uh, and then underneath you have the draft language. Uh, for folks at home, uh, there are currently five reasons for which an absence may be excused. Illness or quarantine, bereavement or serious illness in the family, whether so inclement as to endanger the health of a child, observance of major religious holidays, and exceptional reasons with the approval of the principal or their designee. There will be other, uh, discussion around the attendance policy. We'd like to bring to policy subcommittee in the spring or summer, uh, but for now, this is the proposed change. Would love to hear your questions and thoughts.
Um, I think families will appreciate just the, the, as a healthcare provider, and I know how much more difficult it is to get appointments, um, outside of school time, um, especially post-COVID. Um, so I think it's, it's nice to provide the families some flexibility with that, um, while still balancing the importance of being in school. Um, so I think, you know, it's, it's hard to, to get those routine appointments in and it's nice to have, um, some language that helps, helps protect that.
I just have a formatting.
Yeah.
Is there a way that we could, in that second paragraph, in, wait a minute? With the existing, uh, existing poli-- with the changes, could we number them like they, you have it up top?
Number a bullet.
Number, number them in the policy, because I think that's a really quick, easy reference for people.
Uh, this is policy J H.
And everything else is the same, just the blue is. Okay.
Great. We'll bring this back to you with that change for the next meeting.
Thank you. Okay, the enrollment report, we are going to skip for tonight. And next is on to Winchester High School, update on the selection process.
Okey-dokey. Whoops. Jordan will be chiming in, and I am hopeful. So, this is the first semi-formal presentation we've done on this. I think Winchester has come up at this table before. The purpose of this presentation is ma-- to make sure the school committee is fully aware of what is happening and to seek your input about next possible steps. So, Winchester is our neighbor to the north, uh, on the eastern shores of the Connecticut. Winchester has had for almost 20 years a tuition agreement with the Keene Public School District. Keene educates their students for, for the high school years. Winchester has a pre-K through eighth building, and then the kids go to Keene. That has been an exclusive, uh, tuition agreement, meaning, uh, Winchester is not allowed to send students, uh, with tuition to other schools. And they have chafed at that restriction. In 2015, 16, this school committee, uh, was in conversation with Winchester about a tuition agreement. We found the old documents digging around, uh, but that did not come to fruition. Almost a year ago, Keene somewhat unexpectedly announced to Winchester that they did not want to continue the contractual relationship after twen-- the end of the 26, 27 school year. Winchester has had to get themselves organized. They've created a Winchester High School Selection Committee down at the, you know, we'll make this, obviously, as we do with all of the slideshows, we'll make this available. Um, you can click on that link to the High School Selection Committee page. We are one of the three schools under consideration for some type of tuition agreement with Keene. Uh, sorry, Winchester. We're one of the three schools under consideration. I'll walk you through what their process is. Uh, they currently have an average of 30 to 35 students per grade. And their, Winchester is conceiving of this as, uh, most likely, uh, a structure in which there will be one quote-unquote anchor school. And the tuition agreement, agreement with that district would have some guarantee of a minimum number of students or minis-- minimum percentage of the eighth-grade class that would go to that building. They have been clear to us and to the other schools in this process. The other schools are Hinsdale and Menadnock. They are not looking for an exclusive agreement. They want their kids to have choice. We know how to do this. We've got Warwick. We've got Vernon. We don't, you know, we, we are very good at this. So, uh, an anchor school and then, um, some other school or possibly even schools, right? This is a little more detailed than, but I, I, so we're giving you an update. Uh, next Monday night, uh, the High School Selection Committee and the school board in Winchester will meet. And the selection committee this week made a unanimous recommendation to the school board that Hinsdale be considered as one of the anchor schools. Hinsdale and Winchester are side by side, long history. Next week, uh, they intend to make their second recommendation about a school that might be considered an anchor school. I'm gonna go up to Winchester that night. If any, I'm not kidding, if any school committee member wants to go up with me, I just wanna go and sit in the room, and I, I want them to see that Pioneer is, is, is interested, right? The next day, uh, Principal Scanlon-Amy and I and Jordan will be visiting Winchester with, uh, several faculty members. And we'll be sitting in on classes, meeting with staff. We wanna have a firsthand sense of what the school feels like. There's a community forum. That's your next school committee meeting date. Jordan will not be at school committee. He will be in the audience, listening to what the community forum feels like. Uh, there's a, um, there's a really interesting structure in New Hampshire Town Meetings called a deliberative session. I don't think we have this in Massachusetts, in which, I don't remember exactly, uh, warrant articles are presented, and if it's not financial, people may from the floor vote to change it. It's a pre-town meeting, meeting. Not a caucus. It's definitely not a caucus. Uh, in March, Winchester town residents are going to take a vote on which school they wanna be their anchor school.
Is it March or May?
March. And then in May, the red, the red is March. And that's okay. There's a, right, because there's another vote. In May, they're, they're, they're voting to confirm a tuition agreement. So, all this information, I wanna make clear, you all haven't decided anything yet, right? We've been working hard. Uh, Melissa came up with the team that went to Winchester for the showcase, uh, in late November. Yep. And we did get feedback that our school rated the highest of the three schools presenting at the showcase. Uh, the feedback was that we, that we were very appealing. Okay, I wanna give, keep, this is all background information. So, currently, for this fiscal year, in the Winchester-Keen agreement, uh, they do things differently from the way we do. Their agreement is that for every regular education student from Winchester who goes to Keene, there's an 18,000 plus something tuition. For every special education student, regardless of the level of service, it's 34,000 or so. They don't, they don't want to have a tuition agreement like that in the future, and I would not want to either. Because one student who's got a lot of needs, you break that budget right away. What Jordan was describing about the special education increment, that's a, that's a much better scenario, I think, for everybody. So with Warwick this year, to give you context, our tuition this year with Warwick is $18,071. And then we have a special education increment for those types of services that we don't generally provide. That's fair, we've seen it. And with Vernon, that tuition again is regulated by the Vermont Department of Education. That's 19,700. So, there's a ballpark, and Jordan and I met with Superintendent David Ryan. He is the superintendent of both Winchester and Hinsdale. He came down to meet with us. We think that the committee, if it moves forward, could get to something that, that would work for the district.
Can we decide that all the tuition agreements would be the same? Wouldn't we have that though?
I don't, I don't recall that. Warwick's is different from Vernon. Warwick's is tied to Vernon, but it's not, Warwick's initial one was the same as, as the Vermont tuition, but there was a two and a half percent increment, increase built in to the Warwick tuition agreement, which is not what Vermont does.
Not to have a bunch of different agreements all over the place, for different dollar amounts.
I don't remember how to call that. So, just, I think this past week, Winchester published a tuition agreement addendum they have recently reached with Keene. And it's, it's, I might describe it as sort of a exit agreement, what this is going to look like. Jordan and I went through it. We also went to their website to try to understand it. This is our understanding. That for next year, the only Keene students who would be allowed to go to some other school, whether they're anchor or other, would be grade 10 students. All the kids at Keene may stay there, who are there, they get to stay through graduation. The following year, students going into ninth, 10th, 11th could go elsewhere. And then 27, 28, Winchester students nine through 12 will have choice about where they attend. So it's not a flood of students next year to any school. Do you want to talk about this, please, Jordan?
Sure. So I'm going to try to keep it simple, right? Getting more money would be good, specifically because of our circumstances where we're a hold harmless district, who's not going to get more Chapter 70 money. And so we, we don't have a lot of great ways to grow revenue at the rate or fashion the rate of inflation, whereas some of our expenses tend to grow like that, right? Like, health insurance might increase by 10% this year. So, having a category like tuition revenue that could have some possibility of, of growth, and possibly pretty substantial growth, would be great. And it would, you know, have several positive benefits, one of which being not as much pressure, pressure specifically on town assessments, being exclusively the only area that we know has an ability to grow. And it, it also, you know, provides us an opportunity to invest in our programming, right? And enhance what we're already doing well. So, you know, long and short, more money would be good. There are few opportunities for districts to get a lot more money. You know, and, and, and so this is a, a great opportunity. And we think we, obviously, the residents of Winchester felt as well, you know, that we make a compelling case for why this is a nice place to be educated. And, and isn't that wonderful? And wouldn't it be great to provide a really high-quality education to even more students? Get some money for it.
This could allow us the opportunity to bring some courses back that we may have gotten rid of. It's exciting.
It sure could. It sure could. Mrs. Brennan is nodding her head. Yesterday, at the faculty meeting, Mrs. Scanlon, Amy kindly gave our team time to discuss with the Pioneer faculty this whole idea, and they had some great insights. We showed them some of these. I don't want to go through all of these with you, but I want to make you aware. New Hampshire has a dashboard for their school district, so again, you will, I'll send this to school committee tonight. It will be part of the packet. Click on the links and have a look. Winchester's got 358 students. Over all, the town of Winchester has a higher rate of poverty than does any of our three towns. Their rate of students in special education is somewhat higher. The racial makeup of the student body is strikingly similar to the student body in our towns. There are some significant differences, and I have to say, I was so proud of our faculty yesterday. It's hard for you to read the numbers there. In this middle box, it talks about educator profiles. The average teacher salary in Winchester was $52,755. An average salary can be really funky, because it depends on the experience of the teacher cohort. If you have a lot of new teachers, the average salary will be lower, while the salary scale might have been excellent. However, 52,755 is lower than our entry salary on the current salary scale. In addition, educators certified in their subject at the Winchester School, that's currently at 65%, or that was last year. Maybe that has changed. We are in the 90s. I took a look at our licensure. We, we're doing really well. We've really improved. There are, we're doing well with that. And, and I mentioned being proud, and that's because some of the Winchester results on the New Hampshire State Achievement Tests, and I am utterly unfamiliar with the New Hampshire State Achievement Tests that are given every year. I have never seen one. Some of the scores are concerning. You know, fewer than 10% of the kids were deemed proficient on the science test last year. And what our teachers here very quickly said was, well, hang on. If a whole lot of teachers weren't certified in their subject, and if the wage scale was low, maybe, maybe there's some room for improvement. And I, I say this with kindness in my heart towards our neighbors in Winchester.
Yes.
Kindness in my heart. Maybe those kids who come here, where there is a stronger and stronger educational program with a highly professional teaching staff that is better compensated and certified in their subject area, maybe those kids will blossom. I was concerned about over here, there's some school environment numbers. There is an out-of-school suspension rate of 13.11%. We don't understand that number. I can't find what I can click on, on the dashboard to say, this is what the number means. We will certainly be asking about this when we visit on Tuesday. I did have a conversation with Winchester's School Board Chair this week, who assured me that they have made tremendous gains this year, and some of these numbers that we're seeing from last year are quite different just the first half of this year. So that's some of that. This is some of the proficiency information from the achievement test. This is the one that I, I look at most. Level one is the lowest level. Level four is the highest level. So for ELA proficiency, and I think they do start this testing in third grade, the way we do in Massachusetts, 44% of the kids at Winchester School scored at level one in ELA. And 30% were in level two, 20% were in level three, and they didn't have any, or less than 10% in level four. Math results were somewhat similar, and the science results were, were low. This is the suspension data, and again, I don't know what it means, right? So we will be asking about that. Looking at the town, I thought, I thought, this feels important to me, that we have a sense of, you know, who might be joining us to any extent. So, this is a bit of a mishmash of information. The American Community Survey is a part of the United States Census Bureau. You can get single-year data. You can get data from several years. Much of this, for our three towns, comes from the 2023 ACS, American Community Survey, of the federal Census Bureau. Some of it for New Hampshire comes from the 2018 to 2022, and some of it came from a website that had extracted data, because Winchester's numbers don't appear in the same format as do the Massachusetts numbers. But more or less, Winchester's bigger than we are. They've got 4,200 people. You know, that's certainly more than any of our towns. Median household incomes, it's lower than ours. It's closer to Berniston's. The poverty rate is much higher. It's triple what Berniston's is. And the bachelor's degree information, I want to do a caveat here. These from the ACS were quite clearly the whole adult population. There's an outside chance that this 13% is from the population 25 years of age and older in Winchester. So it could be slightly higher if you took the 18 to 24 population. But in general, I am not making a judgment call saying that having a bachelor's degree is the be-all. And I'm not making that, I'm just describing numbers. This is what educational attainment levels look like in the various towns. Oh, I started putting something together here. Attendance, kids at the Winchester Elementary School, I think this is from last year, had an 89.9% attendance rate. The PBRSD numbers, that's just our elementary buildings. They're a 10th of a percentage off. They're so close, Berniston and Northfield, 94.5. At first glance, that might not look like a big deal. But on 180-day school year, that would mean that the Winchester kids are missing 8.28, 8.28 days more per, more per year than our Berniston and Northfield students on average. So there might be some work that would have to be done about. We get you to school all the time, all the time, all the time. Students with disabilities, we're current, they are at 22.9. We're currently at 16.2. English learners, we have under five. They have under five. That's, that's a category that's, um, and again, these are Winchester school, not the numbers up at Keene, because I can't, I can't figure out how to disaggregate the Winchester students at Keene High School. That was so much information.
Will they be providing a bus to get them there?
They would have to.
Our initial conversation's been, yeah, they would need to provide transportation.
Yeah, I know they would, but you wouldn't have parents, do you not, would you? Would they have a bus coming back?
There'd have to be.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah. The attendance would go.
So I'm, 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 I'm gonna, we have been, as a team, working really hard on this to try and learn about Winchester and engage with Winchester. It was really a pleasure to go up there for their high school showcase. And it was, you know, it was great to hear that we did so well. There's a lot to consider for school committee. Being the anchor school might mean that, you know, I'm making this up, maybe 20 kids, 22, 25 kids a year come here. That's a big change. That would be, you know, over four years. We're then talking 90 kids in this building, just in the high school years. There's been some discussion of, hmm, might be really nice to be one of the schools where it's not the anchor school, but the other choice school. And then we know the kids who come here, their families have made a very deliberate choice. We like what Pioneer has to offer. We want to go to Pioneer. And, and we, we, we buy into that program. It seems great to us. Even five students a year could be transformational financially, because five kids, go, round up to 20. $100,000 a year. But then five plus five plus five plus five, in four years, we're talking 20 kids at 20,000. $400,000. And we don't need to add a lot of staff for that, because five kids tucked into the freshman class doesn't mean a new teacher. Five kids tucked into the sophomores. My goodness, couldn't we do a lot to make this program even better? Yeah.
Should we become the anchor school? Do we have the capacity to handle those students coming in with that scenario?
Would you ask, Claire, would you, Stephanie's got a great question, and Claire had thoughts about this.
Sure. Would we have the capacity, if we were selected as the anchor school, to, to take in that larger number of students?
I, I do. I really think that we, we would. And it would be, and it would be a slow roll. It's not like we're getting all of the kids right away.
Right.
And so, you know, you're talking about, what, 30-something students? And, and it's just a few every year, every year, until like that third or fourth year, when they all, you know, come, unless they go someplace else.
Sure.
But I, I think that, I do think that we can handle it. We had it before, so I don't know why we can't do it again.
Good point.
So, yeah, right. And I don't think, you know, I mean, I think that we could really absorb them nicely within our classes.
This feels like a very exciting moment for Pioneer, and, and I think it would be a really nice partnership with our neighboring, I mean, Winchester's right up the street, so, right up Main Street. So I think it would be a really nice partnership with, with our neighbor to the north.
Could, could you go back to the timeline?
Yep.
Because I think, you know, next step's kind of moving forward.
Thank you.
Where, where, where do we go from here? We just had the presentation. Really, January 13th, they're going to move another school forward. So that may or may not be Pioneer. We, we may find out we are not the other school.
Anchor school.
Anchor school. Anchor school. Doesn't necessarily mean we couldn't engage as an option for, for some students. So there's still some moving parts, right? This, they need to determine who the other anchor school is. We need to go up there, you know, our administrative team needs to go up there and get a feeling for what is the vibe of the school and the students, and really understand a little bit more holistically how that would integrate with, with our school and what we're looking for. So, we will have more of an update, at least at our next, at the next meeting, on whether we would move forward or not. And then we can start getting into the conversation of how we would envision our role with Winchester.
Yes. And we, they have asked us, you know, to stay in the process. They have made clear, they would need a guaranteed maximum tuition rate for FY '26? No. 26?
Yep.
Yeah. Before their February 1st deliberative session. So, if, if, you know, if the visit, I would, if the visit on the 14th goes well, Jordan will continue working on a proposal for the school committee about, again, we, we know we could be in the ballpark, given what they're doing. This is what we would recommend to school committee that you approve as a preliminary. Look, if we were to enter into a tuition agreement, we're not going to charge you more than X for, just for FY '26. That would be the, and again, FY '26, it's a pretty low-risk proposition, because it's only the 10th graders. And they would have to be kids who are currently at Keene who choose to leave. Right, so it could be a, a small number. So it would, what I'd like to be able to do is going up on the 13th, I'm not part of that meeting, I'm in the audience, but, you know, if they say Superintendent Cancello, but, you know, what is the school committee thinking? I'd like to be able to give them a, here's what the school committee's thinking. What might that be?
It sounds like an excellent opportunity for both the students and our students and, you know, our, our school district. So I think it's, it's very positive. I'm wondering if we make it through the meeting where we're declared, you know, either an option for an anchor, an option for a backup for choice. If may, maybe we would even want to extend to them some kind of an open house, where we can bring the students down, the families can come. It's certainly not anything obligatory to them, but they can come through and get an idea of what the school feels like and what the, what the atmosphere is like. Because that's a big, a big change. And it sounds, it sounds like a nice opportunity.
It's a great idea.
Thank you.
We, and we have extended an invitation, and Annie and her team made a beautiful flyer that we've sent up to them on our district website and on the Pioneer website, on the front pages of Winchester Families. Want to visit? Contact Principal Scanlon, Amy.
Nice.
So could we collectively say that this is something we would like to move forward with and continue in the conversation based on tonight's presentation?
Definitely.
Yes, okay.
That would be great.
Yes. Okay, so consensus on saying yes, that that is something that the school committee would be supportive of?
That's great. That's, that's, that's super. Thank you so much.
Okay.
It's exciting.
Thank you. I'm gonna say one last thing. Sorry. When I went up and sat in the audience, for they had a community forum in their town hall, I don't remember which month, it made me sad in certain ways, because person after person got up and spoke about how Keene doesn't want their kids. And Keene has never wanted their kids. And Keene has never respected them. And Keene looks down, and I don't know if it's true or not, but the pain in the room was palpable. And to me, I, I just kept thinking, that would not happen here. It's just that, that is, it would never happen at Pioneer, that kids would be othered from another town in that way, so.
I'm thinking about that article that I shared with many of you, and it's all about that. And for those of you that read it, the Thread Program in New Jersey, where they assign multiple adults to help children who are at risk for failing, like whether it be making sure they wake up on time, making their school lunches for them, those kinds of things. I'm just thinking about that and what an opportunity we have to make a difference.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, okay. So personnel update. We have that included in our packet.
Yes. There's not, not a lot there. We did, you know, it was on there, I should have had on here. Our district treasurer, Scott Adams, has resigned. They have a new barn. Scott's got his bees. He brings us gifts of honey and beeswax candles. And I think he's probably ready just to not be doing this. The treasurer works for us one day a week. So that position has been posted. And we have some, what we think is really exciting news about, candidate for that position, we'll bring back to you later.
Okay, great. Thank you. And enrollment update. Anything of note?
Uh, no.
Do you have anything of note? No, I didn't see anything of note.
That there was any change?
No, no change. Okay. There is no other business, unless anyone has other business that they'd like to move, bring to the front. I don't have any.
I just have a brief comment. I wanted to thank the students for coming tonight, very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I just wanted to, in light of all the big decisions that we will be making, I think we need to reach out with our towns in a more collaborative and a communicative manner. The budget subcommittee meeting was very difficult, again, last night with finance committees and select board members. And I, I really am feeling that we maybe need an intervention if we can't do it amongst ourselves. And we could bring in MASC or DESI or something, or someone. I, I really thought about this on my ride home last night. And I do recall, I don't know how many years ago, when this district was in dire financial need, and Christine Lynch from DESI came with Jane Handy from the Department of Revenue, and they sat and they told the school committee that you need to collaborate with the towns, and you need to start in October, working on your budgets, asking the towns what they can afford in their assessment. And I'm afraid if we do not reach out between the district agreement, the budget, the MSBA, we're still going to have this very contentious relationship. And the other thing, having two members on a subcommittee is very difficult for us to be making large decisions. Two of us, some of who are new with no background, making huge decisions for this district is long-lasting for 30 and 40 years to come financially. And decisions we make today are going to be long-lasting for years to come after we're all gone. And for two people to make difficult decisions, believe me, fingers can be pointed for a lot of years. It is known that elected municipal officials do have anger directed at them and vitriol. It's just something that has been part of an elected official's role. And that's been documented and said. And so we have to, it's not right, and we should be having more kindness, kindness to one another. But we're headed for very difficult waters between the state and the feds, and the feds and what's coming down. And I think, I implore us to really discuss more collaboration and communication. If you look at the definition of collaboration, if we don't, we are taking some very heavy risks for this district. And I'm not willing to be a risk taker and fail. I want more people making these decisions, informed decisions. The more people we bring to the table to discuss, the better off decision-making we're going to have. This is becoming very, very difficult in our towns. And so I am going to say that we need to come up with a plan for this.
Are you saying that on the collective bargaining committee, because there are only two people, are you asking, it would be nice if, can we, can we add more people to those committees to support?
Well, there's, yeah, I, I just don't feel that the few of us are representative of 5,000, 200 people when we're sitting in a subcommittee. If I disagree with her.
What do we do?
What do we do? And that's not a good feeling, you know? You may have your reasoning, and I may have mine. And we need to make better informed decisions. And sometimes we don't have data to back us up, you know? I, I'll be honest, we didn't have any data, and we didn't have any data last night. And so we're going to these meetings without data to make a decision. And that, to me, should not be happening.
To your point with the budget subcommittee meeting, I mean, I felt like we had the data that was available, and we knew that certain data wasn't. But one thing I thought was very interesting in that meeting is that I felt that we bridged that disconnect and opened up a little bit more of a communication line and expressed interest in it. So, you know, I know personally, I've been trying to think of ways that we can bring together at least common thought or an exchange of thoughts regarding these things without it being laborious on either part, because in both situations, you have people who are on different schedules and, you know, obviously have their constraints for their life. So why don't we discuss it? Why don't we discuss what we can do and just have a discussion? It certainly can't hurt.
I see what you're saying, though. If you have two people on a committee and they both have totally different viewpoints, you need that, at least a third person. So I, I would be willing to, if you feel like we should have three people at least on each committee, I'm totally happy to join another committee. I don't know what you all think about.
Well, and I recognize the, the thought process. You were trying to do this so that we weren't overloaded. It was a lot to be on three committees last year. I can say that for one. But it is interesting, because when we were in our subcommittee meeting the other night, I was like, hold on a second, what if we don't agree with one another? Like, we were at an impasse.
Is it possible to bring it to the full subcommittee?
Well, the other, correct. The other thing is, yes, please remember.
And what if one didn't want to, is what I'm saying, like?
Right. Well, all, so as a subcommittee, you can't make decisions on behalf of the full committee.
No, of course, of course.
So, yes, we, we can absolutely, you know, move more people in, into these spots if that is what the, the committee is feeling. But I also just want to remind you that the, the decisions that are made ultimately are done by a full committee, not a subcommittee. The subcommittee does the work, right? And that can be presented. There's been many times on a policy subcommittee, I do not agree with what we have done, but it gets moved forward to the full committee. And the full committee makes the decision. And I think it's okay to be transparent about that also.
Yeah, for sure.
To say, we are moving this forward, you know, in, in whatever it is.
There is a, I've been in a position where something is moved from a subcommittee to the full committee, and it's the way it's presented, too, and the way it's voted on.
Well, and that's also on the subcommittee.
Yeah.
The, the subcommittee does the presentation, right?
Yeah.
So I, so if that is, and I'm hearing you, Melissa, saying that you are willing to step up and be on another, another committee, right?
If you feel like it would be helpful to have an extra person, or, so if you give a presentation to the full committee, you could, in your presentation, say, one of us believes this.
Yeah, agree.
One of us believes this, these are our reasonings, and then the whole rest of the committee would just kind of.
I'm comfortable with that.
There was a two committee, two-person committee.
Right. I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah. But of course, if people are feeling like they really want to be on another committee, please feel free, as long as we don't hit quorum, right, on this, on these subcommittees, then, then we're, then we're okay. In response to collabora, collaboration, it's something that you have brought up multiple times. I'm asking for suggestions of what that means to you, because it sounds like maybe what we have been doing or have not been doing hasn't worked. And as budget chair, since you've been budget chair for a while, reaching out to the town starting in October is something that could have been done with meetings, if you would call the meeting and things like that. I don't know if, when a budget meeting is posted, if you want to share out to, and specifically invite people to come to the meetings. So I'm wondering exactly, what are the action steps that you are looking for that would make things more collaborative?
The action steps that we could have taken is already gone by with the district agreement. When we say, we told the towns two meetings ago or whatever, we're going to be more collaborative. This is all now behind us, right? Being collaborative is not having them sit back there and us here. We should have brought them to the table. And so that's, that kind of stuff is what I'm talking about.
So, so as we worked on the district agreement, we were on that committee. You were the chair of that committee.
And I did try at one point.
And you did.
Yeah.
You did try, Michelle.
I did.
To reach out and engage, and people did not show up.
That is not true.
Right?
We had a subcommittee meeting, and I was told that the public couldn't speak.
Well, that, as chair, you can recognize people to speak, right?
And I did, yeah.
However, the subcommittee meetings are our, our meetings. And so if.
That's where it should be.
If, correct. So if it is a meeting that is more of a public forum, you brought, like what we've been doing these past public forums, right, where it's expected that people would have full engagement within it.
Right.
That, that could have been done. I guess what I'm trying to say is we have reached out multiple times to engage, and it's not always reciprocated. Right?
I, I don't feel that we've done that. So sending emails is not being communicative and collaborative at the table. You know, I went through something that I have used in my past about communication and collaboration with my staff. And the only way you're going to get improved decision quality is to bring diverse perspectives from all sides on an issue. It leads to better, more well-rounded decisions. When people from different backgrounds, departments, or areas of expertise come together, they bring unique insights and solutions. Fostering buy-in and ownership are when people are involved in decision-making processes. Reducing risks of mistakes, that's one of the things I'm talking about for the future. If we make huge financial mistakes here, this could last years for the towns. You know, as taxpayers, we have to think about that. Our population is getting older. They're on fixed incomes. We know that we're not getting younger people into our communities. And building trust and relationships is regular collaboration and open communication to build a culture of trust and respect. And we've talked about this not trusting what is happening that was said something, you know, last night. And it just keeps going on and on and on. And we have to make decisions that are crucial for the future of our towns with less risk that we take on by ourselves.
Was there any feedback in your meeting about what they would have liked to have seen, like being involved in earlier brainstorming sessions? Or did they not know that meetings were happening that they could have come to? Or was there any specific feedback?
No, last night is something that just happened. And it's never happened that way before. We've always had a budget by now. And there was no budget last night.
Nor was there one requested? And when it was requested, I said, I'll give it to you in two days. So.
Yeah, yeah, now, yeah.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, as the budget chair, you didn't request one?
I wasn't chair yet.
Okay.
So, I just made chair tonight.
But, but I'm just saying, it gets to the point where it's accusational, and, and the risk of financial missteps.
Yes, that, yeah.
We just had the auditor present.
Right.
His, his presentation wasn't, you're at extreme risk of financial problems. It was, hey, things are going well. Now, of course, there's always going to be additional risks, but at some point, I understand the vitriol point, but at some point, we also have to say, okay, everybody who's on the school committee is elected. So it's, it is their responsibility, and we're paid to be here. So it's our responsibility to say, well, actually, maybe we should give that responsibility to somebody else. I would say that's less democratic. Like, people elect you to the position, they expect you to do it, and, and I'm getting paid, I'm expected to do it. It might be less risky to ask the select board to make the budget, but it also would be completely inappropriate, given it's my responsibility. And in terms of not having a budget, I mean, that's like a really recent, new grievance, but it could have easily been remedied. If someone asked for one, I'd give it. What I was trying to do wasn't not produce a budget. I have a budget. It's not what I thought. It might make more sense to talk in broad strokes. For example, Stephanie just joined the school committee, and we're very happy to have you. And I thought, let's talk about our overall financial position and what goes into developing a budget, because otherwise, I'm just going to hand you a spreadsheet, and people are going to start saying, this is too high, this is too low. Let's look at this specific number, rather than, well, here's the budgeting process, rit lard. And there is data involved in that, so it's not devoid of data. It's not an entire budget, but, and you know what? As I, I said after the meeting to Patricia, technically, maybe that was the wrong thing. We can produce budgets, and, and, and let's be specific again, it's just this year. And this year is unique, because the subcommittee didn't exist till December because of the elections. The previous two years, we produced budgets as early as October. So it's not as if this has never been done. And we went to a lot of town meetings. The results were mixed. It didn't lead to high fives and collaboration. It didn't lead to high fives and collaboration parades. It led to sometimes maybe even more acrimony. So we said, let's, let's lower the temperature. Let's talk in broad strokes at first, then we'll produce the budget. And, and what I'm hearing is maybe we should produce it earlier, and that's fine, we can do it. But it isn't a crisis moment, in my opinion, especially on the finance stuff. There's always stuff that can be done better. I'm in no way infallible. But I don't even think the rank and file members of our towns feel that it, it's a crisis. I mean, when we go to town meeting, right, people vote for it. People like their school. There, there are, there are some people who have really specific opinions and, to be fair, are probably protecting their own interests. But I think people like, for example, in Washington, would be really upset. People don't like lobbyists getting to write legislation, but they'd like it even less if the House of Representatives said, we're not going to vote, we're going to let the lobbyists vote, right? Everybody has their own specific special interests, they're, they're going after and wanting things, but we can't give them the responsibility and hand it over. I mean, that's not right. I'm, I'm not going to let someone else make the budget or, I mean, collaboration is not giving them the responsibility to do it. So if, if there's a specific thing, like they'd like the budget earlier, that could be said, right? Hey, you know what? It would have been helpful, can we have a collaborative agreement to have the first draft of the budget by December 15th? And if it was said in that tone, I think everybody would be fine. That wasn't the tone, right? And that's why it became contentious. I don't, I'm not like easy to get my feathers ruffled, but if, if someone who isn't actually a member of the meeting is driving the meeting, that's also not right. That's not being an attendee and listening, that, that's taking over and talking over the top is the person who is supposed to be presenting, then you need to, you know, say, hey, look, we're not going to do it that way.
I just want to back up, Jordan. For years and years and years, the budget was started earlier than this. It was started, we had, and I said it last night, we met with different department heads, we started December, November, whatever. By January, we had, we were waiting for the governor's budget, then we're waiting for the senate budget, then we're waiting for the joint committee, that happens in June. We were already working on it.
Yep.
And I just felt like.
I started working on it in August and.
You know, going to a meeting with, just to discuss something was not a good use of our time. And so I would have liked to have known that, you know? And if you asked me as chair, I would have, and I wasn't chair.
Yep.
But you were in October and November, too, just, just to back up a little bit. I just have to.
Yeah, but we didn't have committees.
In October and November, we did.
Prior to the election.
Prior to the election, yeah. Yeah. Stephen.
Whenever, if there's a moment, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Stephen, go ahead.
I'm sorry, yeah. So I just, I was at the meeting yesterday, Jimmy, and I felt as though we had the information that we need at this time and that the process is being done very effectively as it has in the past.
Thank you.
Did you have something you wanted to say?
Jordan tried something new with my supervision. Maybe it didn't work as well as we hoped. There were accusations leveled against Jordan that were unfair and unfounded, as far as I'm concerned. And I didn't get a sense that the subcommittee members, in my opinion, rose sufficiently to his defense. That takes a toll on my team. And I'm talking about you, because you're my subordinate, right? That's not okay. One of the members was outrageously out of line. And I, for one, am tired of observing the school committee's failure to take up more space and insist upon decorum at meetings when town officials are engaging with us. I really wish that you could figure out how to politely insist. You can have the treatment of yourselves that you want, but the treatment of my team and me be consistently professional and polite and respectful. And it is not. It was not last night. I thought Jordan did a fine job of explaining what he was trying to do differently. His approach was reasonable. He was saying, we don't have all the numbers. We'll get the numbers at the end of January. Gosh, it's been a drag for years that our district agreement has a February 15th date for a vote on the budget. That makes no sense. That means that we get the numbers at the end of January and you have to scramble things based on the numbers to vote on the 15th. And he was saying, correct me if I'm wrong, what I'd like to do is talk to you about the big picture and our thinking and what we're hoping to accomplish. And there were some great ideas in there, including this notion of investing in this school because revenue can grow. That's entrepreneurial. It's smart. It's thinking ahead many years. Jordan tried something new with my approval. It didn't work, okay. In a more collegial environment, folks might have said something like this, I got it, I see what you're trying to do. And I still wish that we had some numbers in front of us. Which numbers could you give us? Those words or something akin to those words did take, they, they went across the table, they happened. But the vibe wasn't there. There was a, a member who later apologized, a representative from another town, who used words like secret budget, intimating that we, as your leaders, were developing a secret budget and for some, and she later used the word nefarious. I don't think something nefarious is happening. But when one uses that word, it's put into the atmosphere. And began talking about public records requests. And does the district have to respond to public records requests the way that other public entities do? Well, of course we do. That is corrosive. The apology was genuine and the apology was appreciated, for certain. But the words were still said. And we've talked about this before, when town officials have intimated that Jordan and I have engaged in economic malfeasance. And I have had to stop meetings in Berninston on, on two occasions to say, when you say that, you are harming my professional reputation. We never engage in unethical activity. I think our union leadership, I hope, can nod and say, anytime they engage with me, like, it is so by the book. So I'm letting the school committee know again, when town officials come to the table and are demeaning, it ships away at our ability to do our best work. The district is in far better shape. We have, we have years, I, 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 I got a long, we have years left to go. But the notion that we have somehow not been collaborative and the insistence upon this and the repeated statement flies in the face of my experience and flies in the face of others' experience. You, you weren't here for this. The national consultants who ran the facilities master plan process said they had never seen a district get the kind of numbers in a survey that we get. We had marvelous participation on the district planning committee. And Michelle, you weren't there for the first most important meeting. You were a member of the committee. You missed that meeting and at least one other meeting. So you didn't see the incredible work that was so collaborative among people from towns. We had students at the table. I want to, I want to correct the record and say, I believe this school committee does an excellent job at being collaborative. You are polite. You could do communicate with the towns. I have been at a town meeting where town select board members said that we had not communicated with them about the budget. And I said, wait, wait. I have sent multiple emails. I will go home and forward them emails. And I did go home and forward the emails. That select board never said, shoot, we're really sorry, the district has been communicating. So, Michelle, you have your perspective. It is valuable, it is true. I disagree with much of what you're saying, and I think the record does not comport with what you are saying. I'm done.
Thank you.
Yeah.
With regards to intrums where we have an election going on, but we know that in the normal process of things, we would be updating or doing certain things, and that is an exception. We really should put in place an interim type of, of, you know, supervision. It doesn't have to be the same name or anything. I understand that was a deviation from what we had normally done, and that's why their expectations were there. I thought we did a good job of, of working out what could work. And I, I want to say again, because I said this last night, and it's, it's very true. I've only been on this, this committee for a very short amount of time. Every time we have a meeting, I see the type of resources that I need as someone with limited experience to make an educated decision based on facts. And they are cited, and I can go back and look at those. So I do very much appreciate the work that you've both done. And I very much appreciate your flexibility as we try to work towards, for instance, last night, we tried to work towards updating and you had so kindly said, I'll have this out to you in, you know, two days. So there was a difference in that. And I agree, you know, it was, I also think you have more inference because of, you know, your overall position. You understand the temperature. We're in a little bit of a pickle with the towns.
Yeah.
But we don't have to be. We can be more receptive to things and we can take on more roles. I know that you two do an enormous amount of work. So anytime I'm making a concession, I, I think of that, oh, good. I just said, hey, should we send this? Yay, more work for you. So anything that we can do, I think, as committee members or any kind of, just, just imagining what would improve it, that we could take that on ourselves or discuss how we might do it better. I think it'd be a wonderful use of our time. I really do. Because we have short meetings and we need to get a lot done. You know? Thank you.
Well said. Thank you for saying that.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay. So the executive session is going to be modified. A is going to be removed. So would anyone like to make a motion to go into executive session? And just read B is fine.
I'll make a motion pursuant to Master General Lodge, Chapter 30A, Section 22FG, to go into executive session for the approval of executive session minutes from December 12th, 2024, not to return to open session at the end of executive session.
I'll second that.
Okay. Melissa Osborne, yes.
Stephanie Arroyo, yes.
Raina Dastu, yes.
Gretchen Kelton, yes.
Michelle Druzzo, yes.
Stephen Martin, yeah.
Melissa Gary, yes.
Okay. Let's go in. No, for the minutes. Yeah. This is the minutes. Okay. And I'll be cleaning up your.
Okay, okay.